Good evening and welcome to Livermore City Council meeting for tonight. I call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all members of the city council are present and accounted for. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Question for the city attorney, was there any reportable action taken during the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay, with that, I am going to adjourn the special closed session meeting and then move on to the rest of the agenda. We have proclamations and presentations. We have tonight our Assemblywoman Rebecca Bauer-Kahan here and Sean Kumagai, who is also a member of the Dublin City Council, but also a member of the Assemblywoman's staff. So would you like to speak to us tonight? Thank you for coming out, I really certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and all of the residents who are here tonight came by. We closed legislative session a week ago, so wanted to come by and give you an update as we wrap up the 2019 legislative year. We had an incredibly productive year, and I can assure you, we were working very hard until 3:00 a.m. the last night of session to make sure that we made all the decisions that needed to be made. A few things worth mentioning this year, so we tripled our investment in the California Violence Intervention Prevention Program. This is one of the most successful programs nationwide to reduce violence, especially gun violence. It's also an amazing investment because for every $1 we spent in these violence intervention programs, we save $7 on healthcare costs and public safety costs. So that was an exciting thing, that we got that up to $30 million this year. We also put $19 billion in the rainy day reserves to protect against the next recession, which many of us know is coming. And when it comes to protecting our state against wildfires, which obviously is a huge concern for areas like ours, we invested $225.8 million for prevention, including new firefighting resources and technology, and including some fuel breaks here in the district to help make sure that as fire comes, we are prepared. I am proud of my own bill package, I sent 10 bills to the governor's desk, five of which he has signed, and five of which we are waiting for him to take action on. And I was proud that even in these politically divisive times, almost every single one of my bills received broad bipartisan support in both houses of the legislature, something we worked really hard on, talking to everybody across the aisle and on the committees to make sure that they felt good about the legislation that we were moving forward. A few highlights of the session were AB 1532, known as the Natalie Georgie Sunshine Act, which was inspired by the 2013 death of a 13-year-old Danville girl after a severe reaction from peanut allergy. And it will protect all those living in California with allergies by ensuring that food handlers have a simple certification and safe food handling for deadly allergens, something that hopefully will protect Californians from experiencing the same fate as Natalie. The second bill, AB 1421, that the governor signed, fixes inequities in the law to save taxpayers money related to criminal probation. People on probation who are abiding by all the terms of their supervision will no longer be incarcerated purely for a failure to pay fines and fees. Every time we revoke someone's probation, we spend $4,400 more to incarcerate them when all they're doing is failing to pay fines and fees. So moving away from incarcerating people just for being poor and focusing on those who truly need to be behind bars. The third bill, signed by the governor, was AB 1292. This modernized a law for the transfer of firearms to make sure that those who inherit guns know what to do with them. This was a commonsense gun violence prevention measure which received bipartisan unanimous support, something we were really proud of, to find a way to agree unanimously on how to protect our communities. And AB 1735, which protects the victims of human trafficking to make sure that they have confidentiality with their caseworkers, because when they enter the criminal justice system to seek justice from their wrongdoer, we wanted to make sure that that's a safe place for them after all that they've been through. A really exciting bill that hopefully we will take advantage of a lot here in 2016 was AB 1475, which streamlines the design and architectural procurement process. And this was started as a bill that San Ramon brought to us to help them with reducing costs on the overpass they're doing over the Iron Horse Trail. And as we started to look at the amount of money, Caltrans has saved $400 million in one year using this process. We realized it shouldn't just be a one-off use of this process, but we should make sure all off-highway transportation projects can use this procurement process to save costs and be more efficient. So that was signed into law, and we're really excited about that. And a local measure that we're super excited about is AB 1086. I know that this has been a long time coming, but it is an effort to stop the litigation over the Alameda-Tesla expansion area, something that's been long ongoing here in Livermore. And we were able to pass this bill and send it to the governor's desk to give state parks the opportunity to get out of that acquisition, return it to a land trust, return the money to the Off-Road Vehicle Fund, and get out of the long-running litigation that has vexed that project, and protect the land for the future. And then, you know, we wanted to work on some education pieces. One thing was education for college students, making sure that both college students who are getting a degree on our online for-profit universities are protected. It's an area where people are often taken advantage of, so putting in some regulations to make sure that those online for-profit universities are not taking advantage of California students, and ensuring that there are other ways that students can receive scholarships and not be penalized. So a little bit of what I've been working on in the legislature, and that we're hoping the governor will sign all of it, so that we have all of those measures in place. I want to thank you guys for your leadership on the e-cigarette and the vaping measure that you took action on a few weeks ago. We've tried to do it in Sacramento and have not been as successful as all of you, so I commend you in taking action. We continue to try in Sacramento, but in the meantime, it's really important for our local communities to take these steps to protect our children, especially given what we've been seeing with the illnesses that have been coming as a result of vaping. I also recently had a chance to come down and visit downtown Livermore with your economic development team, which was a real treasure, and see the switch. Councilmember Monroe joined us on that and talked about the downtown plan and talked about ValleyLink. It's something that we work on from a funding perspective in Sacramento a lot, making sure that as the governor has changed his plans on high-speed rail, that that money, which is looking at like it will be moved into some more regional projects, that ValleyLink is on that list. And it's something that I've been advocating for and will continue to advocate for, and I know we're also looking at some grant solutions for you as well, making sure that ValleyLink continues to get the support it needs so that it makes it across the finish line when it's ready and is built, because it's a really important transportation project, as you know, for this corridor. So now I'm on recess, looking forward to being in the district and having time to spend with all of you and the constituents. A couple of Tri-Valley events coming up. We're hosting a constituent walk and talk at Shadow Cliffs Open Space on October 5th at 9:30 a.m., and we'll be hosting a small business workshop on October 3rd at the Dublin Library at 11:30. You heard that Sean Kumagai, who's the district director of my office, is here, and you can also reach out to Gabriel Maniz, who is the liaison here in Livermore and the Tri-Valley. I will also be at the Livermore Chamber Alliance meeting on October 2nd and at Livermore's first-ever Pride Parade on the 19th, so hope to spend a lot of time in Livermore in the coming weeks, as I get more time in the district and less time in Sacramento. And as I close, I just want to say to everyone here that, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with the elected officials here in Livermore and to partner and to make sure that the projects that matter to the constituents of the Tri-Valley get the support they need in Sacramento. So thank you for having me and for allowing me to give that update to all of you at once.
Well, Senator Monroe, thank you very much. Any questions for RBK?
I just had a comment.
What about homelessness? What progress are you making in the state around that topic?
So, we took a lot of measures, as you know. Housing, I believe there were about 300 bills introduced at the beginning of session related to housing and homelessness. It's something that we know is an ongoing problem and is really complicated. I don't think we can just build our way out of it, but that's part of what we're doing. I was at a Tri-Valley Innovation Meeting today, and Mayor Marchand was talking about the 3.5 million homes that the governor has wanted to build, despite the fact that maybe we don't have the infrastructure to support all of that building. And so, really making sure that as we move forward, we, what I tried to do was keep local control in place, make sure that our cities, which many of you are, and I know this city is amongst many of the ones I represent, continues to build and support our communities. I often talk about Livermore and your amazing one-to-one jobs-housing balance, that should be the goal of every city. Most of the cities that I represent in 2016 have the opposite, they have more housing than jobs, and we know there are cities, a lot of cities in the Bay Area who have the opposite, significantly more jobs than housing. So really focusing on that jobs-housing balance, making sure that transportation meets our needs, but that we continue to build, but then also looking at what is causing homelessness. I mean, I spoke a little bit about the bill I carried on fines and fees. It's something we were hearing that, you know, sometimes it's as simple as a traffic ticket or healthcare, or what are the things that are causing homelessness? How do we stop those barriers, and how do we keep people in their homes? So we passed, I believe, 50 bills on housing, some of which I supported, some of which I didn't, but, you know, and hopefully some of that will address some of the things that cause people to go into homelessness. One of the things that, you know, we look at here is how do we continue to provide services, you know, to keep people from crossing that line, because we know it just continues with the cost of living here to mount. So, a lot going on, but it's not an easy problem to solve, as you know.
Senator Monroe?
I just, the day that you came out for, to look at our downtown, you also did something else, you want us?
I did. I joined the library for storytime, and it was amazing. You have such a vibrant library. There was, I think, they said hundreds of kids come for storytime every day, which is phenomenal. So kudos to you for really having a program here that supports the young children in your community to get the reading support they need at that young age.
Great. Well, thank you, and again, thank you for your work with Senator Glazer on 1086 on Tesla. We're waiting for the governor to sign that, so everybody, you know, let the word out, make it known that this has been a long, long battle, so urge the governor to sign 1086.
Yes, please, if you are so inclined, call the governor, because we can use all the help we can get to get it across the finish line.
But thank you for championing that cause, really appreciate that.
Yes, we were not going to let the legislative session close without that bill passing, and we didn't, so that was fun.
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming to Livermore. Okay, now I have a proclamation. I have the authority to do an off-agenda proclamation per Rules and Procedures 9.2. And with that, I would like to recognize that October 7th to the 12th is Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and you guys should well be appreciated. And we have Darryl Revier and Celeste Storres are here tonight, two of our code enforcement officers. So whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens in communities throughout the state of California through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health and life safety, and of course, one of the things you do is you have to protect people from themselves, and that's not always easy, because they don't always appreciate that. And whereas code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles, and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years, with jurisdictions increasingly relying on their expertise and training within their communities. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals, which I can attest to, who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, and enhancing communities and ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the communities they serve, and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in the performance of their jobs, now therefore, the city council, the city of Livermore proclaims October 7th through the 12th as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and calls upon residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as code enforcement officers. With that, I'd like to present this to you.
(Applause).
So, congratulations. So, do you have to make a few comments?
(Laughter).
No, you're, you're the podium, just saying, thank you very much. We're all here.
So, wow, this is really an honor, unexpected. I've been doing this job now since 2001, I believe, and with the city since 1990, and so this is really a nice little treat to get formally recognized for this, even though it's not expected in the least, and I truly, and I know Darryl, I speak for Darryl also, truly do feel, you know, honored to serve this community. I tell it to anybody who'll listen to me how much I truly love this community as a whole. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been here for 29 years. So, there you go.
Well, thank you so much for the great work that you do, and you keep the community, you work to make it look good.
Well, we try.
And I certainly appreciate that. Well, and this doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of the leadership from the city, and you guys are the boots on the ground that actually get the job done. So you need good, consistent regulations, and you need the support, and you have that.
Yep, thank you very much, I agree.
Well, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Darryl, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council, we really appreciate this. As Celeste said, it's definitely unexpected, but it's very much appreciated, and it's nice to know that we have the support of the council and as well as our community as well. We're blessed to have the support of a community like Livermore, so thank you very much, and thank you.
Well, you're working for us, and we certainly appreciate, for the entire community, and it's appreciated. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda, the city council can neither deliberate nor take action, but I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. With that, I have Greg Scott, Jim Schmidt, and Brent Seiler.
I am Greg Scott, and I speak on homelessness in Livermore. I have spoken on homelessness in the so-called community forum here in Livermore City Council for nearly every meeting for two years. I am at least some voice for the 264 homeless individuals, of which 179 are unsheltered as estimated by the tabulation of the January 2019 point-in-time count of the homeless for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development's Annual Homeless Assessment Report. The one Alameda County that counts is biannual. No doubt, the point-in-time count is a significant undercount. President Trump and his administration have recently made some pronouncements about California homelessness. The most lucid depiction of President Trump's intent and disingenuousness on homelessness is by the California State Senator from San Francisco, who said, quote, "Donald Trump is a slumlord who has spent his presidency pushing people in homelessness by taking away healthcare, food assistance, and affordable housing funds," unquote. The state senator's synopsis on President Trump on homelessness is, quote, "He has no credibility on housing and homelessness," unquote. The federal government is going to force the homeless onto federal lands by what means? Handcuffs and leggings? The modern Trail of Tears? Are these Christian values? Neither is the polar political opposite anymore insightful. Former San Francisco mayor and now California Governor Gavin Newsom has a task force on homelessness headed by Sacramento Mayor Darryl Steinberg and Los Angeles District 2 County Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas. They too are making mandatory pronouncements about actions to and of the homeless that would have tragic consequences. The greater part of homelessness is from the widening wealth gap. As journalist Jeff Cohen states, homelessness is, quote, "The horrific cost of our unequal and unsustainable status quo," unquote. Yet it is through the status quo that we somehow think we are going to ameliorate the majority of homelessness. This is not working, nor has it, though the Livermore City Council will probably rubber-stamp by unanimous vote tonight, public hearing, Agenda Item 5.01 on the CAPER Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, for monies from the Housing and Urban Development Department for policies and implementations that overall are not working. Housing is not going to reduce the greater part of California homelessness, and never will, because we don't have sufficient resources. We are simply playing fatuous games in regard to homelessness with the housing-first dogma. For knowledge and understanding on homelessness and to see how simple it is, then why not spend a night out after this meeting without any roof over you and without any private bathroom? Part of the night, you may not have any bathroom at all. This building here that is going to cease to be chambers for the city council could actually be shelter for the homeless. Some homeless will, can take advantage of the safe parking program, most homeless do not have cars. If we truly had intent to deal with the greater part of homelessness, of homeless problem, then we had a place or a commons for the homeless to go to. There seems no political will or intent to do this. NIMBY, not in my backyard, attitudes prevail. By such, the community degradation resulting will come to roost without transformative change here, in the media, and by all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Jim Schmidt, Brent Seiler, Carl Winty.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council and staff. I'm Jim Schmidt, speaking tonight as a member and officer of a new nonprofit corporation being organized. The purpose of our corporation is to fund and construct a building to be used by the arts and science nonprofit organizations to store properties and construct items necessary for their mission. Now, the name of this company will be, that we've applied for, is Livermore Arts and Science Incorporated, or LASSI. Why do we need a LASSI? Well, we have some dire situations. Five of these nonprofit companies are utilizing the old Nob Hill Grocery Store just down Pacific Avenue. Our situation is dire in that we are now occupying the building on a month-to-month rental basis that could be terminated at any time. Most of the companies have no alternative except expensive commercial rental space, and if they need to cut wood, or cut metal, or paint, most storage places will not allow that. We believe the board of our new company contains the skills and experience to raise the funds and construct and operate an appropriate building. Our plans are to build the building on the land under the temporary building that we're in tonight. We look forward to the city issuing a request for proposal. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Brent Seiler, Carl Winty.
Good evening, Mayor, city council staff. You guys have had a heck of a month.
Maybe a year.
Well, we're going to look at the last about 23, 24 days. You know, the city got hit with a virus, no fault of anyone, other than they clicked on an attachment that opened up and started encrypting stuff, and I have to applaud the city for taking a stance on not paying the ransom fee. You know, we send a message back to the people that are doing this, saying, "We're not going to do it anymore." I believe Lowdy was in the same position, and they did the same thing. So kudos to staff and the council for making that recommendation not to go down that path. But it also shows us that when there's a failure, there's an opportunity. Here in Livermore, we've probably got some of the most talented people that work for Amazon, Silicon Valley companies, Microsoft, and just those of us who do this day in and day out. This is our core job. You know, it's taken the city time to get back up on its feet, just like it took Lowdy time to get back up on its feet. But I would encourage the council to look at, much like the council had looked at creating a camp, that you create something with an advisory committee of citizens that have the skill set that can augment and look over what, kind of the shoulder of what the city staff is doing, and make recommendations of what could help better prepare the city in a situation like this and help prevent it moving forward. You know, this is a tough hole that everybody's got to dig out of. I got lucky, we got hit with it, but we had an environment where we were able to recover in a few hours. Not everybody has the leisure of having that ability, because it costs money, and it's something the city would have to look at and make an investment in. So, you know, I think that would be an opportunity to where we could have further citizen engagement with the city. We can take our best practices that we live in from dealing with banking, myself, and healthcare, and we can bring to fruition those things that are easily done, may not cost money. But then there's other things that we can recommend that the city council would have to deliberate on to fund for the staff to be able to implement and protect the city better than what it's doing. So I just ask if, you know, if there's an opportunity, start that up, and I think it should be every city, not just Livermore. This could be something every city should look at, just not Livermore. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Seiler. Carl Winty.
Honorable Mayor, council, thank you all so much for what you do. Staff, team of awesome people that work to have good government function of the people, for the people, by the people. Those in uniform that put on a vest to go to work, I salute you. Mr. Chief, I salute you. For those that come up and speak, I salute you, because an inert citizenry is one of the most dangerous things we can have. So educate, 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 it is divine. I celebrate those who embrace discourse. Let's talk about it. Michael Ferrucci, I celebrate you, because we're able to talk about it. I got pulled into this whole thing on the steering committee about downtown, right, and I just got sucked in, and I just, like, all of a sudden, now I'm, like, what is good government? If I ask myself that question, thou shall educate. So I went through Russo, John Locke, Thomas Hobbes, Ron Chernos, George Washington, Jefferson's biography, Hamilton's biography, Rockefeller's Carnegie times two, his autobiography and his biography, and they didn't necessarily match up. He thought higher of himself than maybe was there. Then I got into Morgan and Vanderbilt, read the First Amendment, the Second Amendment, read ECAP, right? What does that mean? Measure D is part of ECAP? You know, I read most of the California state constitution, it was boring as can be with a lot of little subs and indentations, but, you know, wanting to understand what this all means, it got me to lean in, and I thank, I'm thankful for that. I know more. I'm also, I leaned in because Beds and Heads was really what it was about, because there's so many businesses that didn't promise a hotel. Rusty, he needs that. Alden, and you're, and Alden at Simply Fondue. Range Life, Sacramonie, it's gone. The Ale House, what you've given all the way through, the Sansar, the Thai place, the Italian place, the sushi, the pizza, everything that we have going on. Also, the wineries, you can say, yeah, self-serving, tis, a bit, but I care more about community. The arts, the scientist, high tide raises all ships. That's why I leaned in, it was about a simple hotel, but god darn it, the good government is about so much more than a simple hotel. And so Russo is blowing my mind right now, and he looks at the legislature like the heart, and the executive like the brain. So the heart is made to feel the people, and the executive is made to take action and go through. In this situation, we sort of have dual executives. You can convene, but you're running the ship over there as the person behind it that makes it all go. So, I appreciate you all for what you're doing. I also appreciate Joan Sepulveda, because you got me to lean in on this, right? You have violated some journalistic versus editorial, those lines. It happens so often throughout this world, doesn't necessarily make it right. All I'm saying is, it's not speaking for the majority, right? There's people out there that don't, that believe we should move forward and keep on moving forward. Michael Ferrucci, I said, why is this happening? He's, the only honesty I got, he said, "We're slow growers." It's like, oh, that's honesty. Are you no growers? Do you want to stop at all? Or can we progress it on through? I said, which has more traffic? 140-room hotel or 300-room garage? He said, "Well, the garage has better parking for the bankhead." This is what it's about, right? So I appreciate Ferrucci for coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Winty.
For the majority, I also support the Stockman's Association.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winty.
Mr. Estes at 6.01.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to close the Citizens Forum, and last couple meetings, I've had kind of a little managing misinformation minute here, and I'd like to go back to that again. Last meeting, we had a lot of folks that got up and said, you know, why is everybody so angry? Why can't we just talk to each other? Why can't we just have a conversation without having to go into character assassination? We used to be able to have a conversation, but the question was, why is everybody so angry? And, well, part of it is because it's messaging. There's actually a concerted effort to make people angry, and I think this is really unfortunate. And just a couple of examples, there is a, an article in the Independent a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that really struck me is, this was about, one of the referendums, and it said, "Livermore Mayor Marchand did not respond to a request for comment." I thought, wow, that sounds kind of arrogant, and it doesn't really sound like me, but, because usually when people ask me a question, I'm all about responding. And the Independent has three different phone numbers for And the Independent has three different phone numbers for me, for, and so they could text or call. And I asked the staff at the city manager's office if they had gotten any messages, and they hadn't. And I checked my own emails. I don't have staff to check my emails, that's all on me. And so, I hadn't, I hadn't gotten this question, so I finally did a search, and I found the request for comment. It had been sent to me at 3:00 in the morning. Well, at 3:00 in the morning, I'm usually asleep. I mean, there's some people think I'm supernatural, but, but no, I'm like everybody else. But the request came in at 3:00 in the morning on the day of the deadline. And, you know, sometimes it takes me a day or two to get caught up on my email. So, it wasn't that I didn't respond, it's that I never got the question. So, I think, so the mayor was unavailable for comment, may have been something that would have been quite so adversarial. Also, there was a very large ad that was also in the Independent, and it was talking about the referendum. And what struck me is, it said, "The city council refused to put the matter on the ballot." Refused! Now, I know from my perspective, if my elected officials refused to do something that was legally required, I'd get kind of angry, because I vote, I voted for these people too, but I vote for representation. And if they're not doing what they're legally required to do, then I get angry. So, this was specifically crafted to get people fired up and angry. But, Mr. City Attorney, can the council refuse? But as I said, there's two things we can do. We can either put it on the ballot, but as I understand it, the referendum repeals the action of the council. So that if we adopt the referendum, we have repealed the action of the council, and therefore given the petition as what they originally requested.
Yes, that's the way a referendum works. A referendum, once it qualifies, receives enough signatures to qualify, it suspends the action that was taken by the council, the legislative action, by operation of law. So, basically, returns the status quo before you took an action. So, you are correct.
So, we didn't refuse to put it on the ballot. What we did is, by adopting the referendum, gave the petitioners what they wanted. Now, if we had actually put it on the ballot, putting it on the ballot would have been to seek to affirm the initiative, which was the exact opposite of what the petitioners asked for. So, by adopting that and not putting it on the ballot, we gave them what they wanted. And yet, here, it's specifically written to get people angry. We gave them what they wanted, and we've had people say, "Well, if you do what we want, we'll be happy." But, but they're not happy. This is specifically crafted to make people angry, and yet, specifically, we repealed the action, which is what they wanted. Had we put it on the ballot, that would have been to fight what the petition was about, and that would have been to sought the affirmation of the ordinance. So, we need to be very careful, the words that we use here, because we want to be able to work together, and that's, I think, been the goal of this council, is work with the community. We didn't see the need to have a divisive election, because we adopted the referendum and gave them what they wanted. We repealed the ordinance. There was no need for the, for a ballot, because they got what they want. So, it, it's an unfortunate choice, because we adopted the referendum and rescinded the action.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, if you'd like the city council, the staff's return to get a future meeting to discuss the mechanics of a referendum or initiative, we could do that. But for tonight, I would recommend we get back to the...
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm just, I'm, no, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay.
But, no, I think that that was, that's clarification. You know, we, we up here understand the difference between an initiative and a referendum, absolutely.
Can I add to what you said?
Sure.
So, you were talking about what they wanted. I'd like to be a little specific. So, the referendum repealed the language of the downtown zoning that we did, and the only essence of what that was about was the height of the hotel. It was not about one plan versus another plan. So, there was a misinformation campaign about what it really was about. So, I would just point out that the council said, "Okay, you don't want the height of the hotel to be four stories. It was put to four stories to give additional ADA parking next to the bankhead. We thought, you said very clearly that's what you wanted, we gave you what you wanted, and then you had a referendum to undo it." So, I just want to be clear as to what the "it" was that they were asking for, what they asked for was to reduce the height of the hotel, which in turn reduced the amount of parking next to the bankhead.
So, again, before we get to another voice in here, I would recommend that we get back to the agenda. If you want a future item, we can add it to, staff can bring back a presentation about what is a referendum, what is an initiative. But I would recommend, I restate my admonition.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, these are typically items of routine nature that are adopted in a single motion, unless somebody would like to speak, and we have Carl Winty wishing to speak on 4.04.
I am talking about 4.01. My name is Carl Winty. Hello, council. Hello, staff. Talking about 4.01, which is the minutes, and the minutes house this public discourse that they, that we have. And were I to do it over again in my open forum, these minutes would read, "Also, thank you to Rebecca Bauer-Kahn for serving bipartisanship, working together. Valley link is important." You know, I appreciate it. She came and visited me personally, looking at our sustainability efforts at our company. I salute that level of engagement from our elected officials. She's gone. I was hoping for some credit for thanking her. I'm not running for anything. But also, I just want to follow up. Good government does not happen by accident. Good government happens by discourse, happens by transparency, happens by hiring good people to do a good job at what they do. Our county commissioner, Scott Haggerty, is retiring, right?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, excuse me. Did I say county commissioner?
Yeah.
County supervisor.
It's okay.
My bad, I'm still learning this, right? I've read it all, I haven't retained it all. But how important good government is. And so, as this seat comes up, we have Dave Halpert that's running, we have Melissa Hernandez, both from Dublin, Bob Wachowski and Vinnie Bacon from Fremont. Like, we want to represent our section, right? And so, Tri Valley is what we want. We should all, we should all rally behind our elected official, because the county supervisor, excuse me, is an important position, that we should all say, "Hey, this is what a non-inert citizenry does, is looks in to see how this all works." Thank you to the staff for the consent calendar, there's so much work that goes into it. And again, Don Stasa, I support you personally, and the Stockman's Association all the way through, 6.01. Lastly, I'd like to close that I encourage you to unanimously approve 4.01, which were the last minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any comments on the consent calendar? I've got a couple of comments on 4.03 and 4.04. Anybody? Okay. So, 4.03, that is the approval of, looking for the award of a contract to construct Stockman's Park, and this was a promise 57 years in the making. The past president of the Stockman's Association, Dave Finster, is here, and so it was interesting, I'll handle 4.03 and 4.04. It was, we both have Stockman Park and Veteran Park. They are, they're combined in the two, and those actually have more, more open space than the, than the initiative and on the drawing. But what was troubling to me was that in the neutral explainer piece, as it was called, the explainer piece that was in the Independent, this sculpture, the sculpture of the veteran, and I would like to credit Don Stasa. It was his idea to come up with the veteran taking off his cowboy hat and putting on the doughboy hat. And so, in the neutral explainer piece, that statue was removed. It was taken out, and it was replaced by a fountain. And when I contacted the author of the story, which took out the statue and also took out Veterans Park, there was no mention of Veterans Park, and I asked about that, and they said that the story, they stood by the story, and that it had been vetted by three different editors. Two of those editors were local, and I couldn't understand how a local editor would have missed this, this iconic statue being replaced by a fountain. The, and it's, it's troubling that we have this effort to rewrite the narrative about our downtown, because it's something, this is our heritage, and we cherish that. But I would like to, to highlight, as I said, I didn't quite understand the, Don Stasa's idea, but the job of the artist is to take the inexpressible and make it unforgettable. And I think that's what this sculpture does, is it really is remarkable how they have captured this Stockman standing up to, to go to war, and to support his community and to support his nation. And I think it's a remarkable piece. I think it's unfortunate that somebody tried to remove that. I call it out, because this is how narratives get rewritten, and people start to believe what they've been reading or hearing. So, this is a commitment that this council, this city, made 57 years ago. We're going to stand by this, we're going to stand by Stockman Park, we're going to stand behind Veterans Park, and this statue, as evidenced by 4.04, is going to be built, and it is going to go in our downtown to commemorate the remarkable contributions of our Stockman and our veterans. So, with that, I will entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Warner.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Public hearings, 5.01, this is the CAPER. We do this three, at least three times a year, I think. Just, this just keeps, you know, it's lots of really good information, would certainly appreciate that. So, this is on the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grants and Home Investment Partnership. We have Claudia Young from our Human Services Department.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Claudia Young, I'm the Human Services Program Manager, and I'm here today to present to you the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER, for the program year 2018-19. The city is an entitlement recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Funds. As a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium, we also receive an annual funding amount of home funds for $151,000. The CDBG funds is $459,000. The city is required to submit a CAPER describing program activities and accomplishments. There's a 15-day citizen participation requirement with respect to public review and a hearing, which will be met with tonight's meeting. HUD requires that the CAPER is submitted by September 27th. HUD determines the priority goal categories with expectations that CDBG and home funds will be leveraged with local funds. So, this is something important that I want to note. Although we fund maybe seven or 10 of our providers with our federal funds, we also use that to leverage some of our local funds and some county funds. The goals include goals to address homelessness, affordable housing, seniors, people with disabilities, and other health and other community needs. As a reminder, only 15% of the $459,000, so that's roughly about $68,000, of the entire allocation may be used for public services. The remaining amount may only be used for capital projects and special economic development projects. The Human Services Commission oversees the grants process for both the federal funds and the local funds. Some of the goals are in fact funded with local funds. The need for public service dollars is much higher than what is available. In order to provide a variety of services for all low-income individuals in the community, there is an application process, and the commission does their best to fund a wide range of services, all for low-income households, including homeless, seniors, people with disabilities, and youth. So, today, I want to highlight some accomplishments. With the seven or 10 providers, so this includes federal funds and some of our local funds that we have leveraged, we accomplished serving 6,047 unduplicated low-income Livermore residents. Some of the providers include Access Community Health, so the majority of the 6,000 is for health services through Access Community Health. And it's for health services, and now they have the new dental clinic, so dental services is something new that they're offering. Also, another provider is Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District, and they provide children access to healthcare and dental health services. Spectrum Meals on Wheels provides seniors with daily meals and welfare checks. Krill and Easter Seals provides services for people with disabilities. Calico provides child abuse intervention services, and senior support of the Tri Valley provides counseling and access to seniors, to senior services. Abode and Echo provide tenant-based rental assistance subsidies to formerly homeless individuals, including deposits, rent subsidies, and permanent housing. And Tri Valley provides shelter services. So, this is just to show you the variety of services that we provide in the community to meet the entire community needs. So, in addition, I did want to touch on our pilot programs. So, the federal funds that we have currently with CDBG and home have allowed the city to leverage some county funds, the HEAT funds, homeless emergency aid program funds. And so, I want to talk a little bit and provide a little bit of an update on where we're at. The subcommittee had a work plan, we went through a process, and on July 29, 2019, the council approved a series of pilot programs that are underway, and some were working towards a soft launch. So, one of them is Crisis Intervention Services. So, CityServe has increased their staffing from one and a half case managers to four case managers. They now have 45 volunteers helping with Crisis Intervention Services to walk alongside with folks. This has increased their ability to manage and direct one-time assistance referrals with higher-level stabilization and crisis services such as case management, budgeting, eviction prevention, and recurring multi-layered stabilization services. City Serve also completed all the county requirements for their data entry system, their homeless management information system, which is a requirement. Moving on to trash services. Livermore Sanitation is actively providing two big trash containers, so not your household-type trash containers, they're pretty big, and the service, these services gather approximately three and a half tons per month of trash. So, that's really important to note. And this is, trash that would otherwise end up in our waterways. So, our police department is working with the unsheltered neighbors to self-manage the items put in the trash, and it's working well. Safe parking. Staff has confirmed parking locations and has been working with Block by Block, who's going to be our provider, to, on the logistics of the program, to ensure effective management by the parking attendant. Block by Block is working to onboard staffing for the two overnight attendants. Participant enrollment with City Serve will begin in early October, with the first locations opening in mid-October, as we work through Block by Block's implementation to make sure that we have adequate security and the program location measures are successful. Restrooms. Staff has identified a location for a portable restroom where there is a high number of unsheltered individuals. The portable restroom will be available in October. Biohazard cleanups. Staff is working with Block by Block to identify program parameters and, sorry, program parameters for homeless biohazards hotspots. Block by Block is ordering uniforms and all the equipment that's going to be needed to... Block by Block is ordering uniforms and all the equipment that's going to be needed to carry out the service. A cleaning ambassador will provide services five days a week and the program is expected to have a soft launch in mid-October. Showers and laundry. Staff is working with Asbury and Cornerstone to identify staff to carry out the services. Asbury has identified one staff and so we will begin to expand their services to two days a week in October and hopefully grow to three days a week. And once Cornerstone has found their staff, we will be up to five days a week. And storage. Staff is working to identify a location and a provider for storage. So today, our Human Services Commission and staff is recommending that council adopt the caper to be submitted. And I'm available for questions.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Questions by Smear Carling?
Yes. Thank you for the report. Just a couple of points I wanted to touch on. Regarding the safe parking, I know you've talked about Block by Block providing the management with two attendants. Have you, you didn't specify that we've identified locations for each of the evenings. Is that true?
Yes. We've confirmed all the locations. So we're going to have it seven days a week.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody knew that. The other, the biohazard cleanup services, you mentioned five days a week.
Correct.
What five? Which days?
So currently where we're at right now, it's going to be Monday through Friday.
But not the weekend?
Not the weekend right now. We're still working through some of the logistics to confirm that.
Are we trying to go to seven days? It seems like the weekend might be as important as the middle of the week.
So currently with our budget, we've budgeted for five days a week. But we'll be looking at that closely.
But we have to, so why have we decided, so why have we decided Monday through Friday and not say, I don't know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
So we've met with our police department. We've met with Public Works and the Business District. And right now to address specifically any of the homeless biohazard issues that we're having, we've come to the conclusion that Monday through Friday are the days. This will take off or kind of alleviate some of the things that our regular maintenance department would do so that they could take care of other things that are not related to homeless.
Well, my own recent experience over the last two weeks or something was Sunday night was not a great night downtown. So that was my point in asking you about the weekends and not Monday through Friday.
So what we're going to be doing with the program is we're going to be assessing the programs, all the programs, weekly and month-to-month, just to see what's working, what's not working, and what we need to shift. So we do have the flexibility to shift some of those days. So we'll be looking at that closely to see what the need is.
Okay. Thanks.
Questions? Councilmember Monroe?
If you could speak a little bit more about City Serve and what their potential will be. You said they're working with about, they have about 45 volunteers. How many people are they working with? How many people are the volunteers working with? And what's, where do you think it going? Where do you see it going within the next year?
So the goal for City Serve is going to be serving 125 clients. When you have four case managers, typically they're able to average roughly about a caseload of 25 to 30 folks. And what you have to think about is the different levels of services that each client is required. And this is where the volunteers come in. There's the level of service that the case manager will do to do the enrollment and to provide the supportive services. But what's working for City Serve and why we like this model is that their volunteers are now coming in to walk side-by-side with clients. And so, for example, we had a client that recently got placed at Chestnut Square. You know, you would think it's pretty easy, have them sign up, you know, do an application, but there's a lot of things that have to go into it. And we had a resident that really stepped up, worked very closely with City Serve, with Abode. So City Serve's services is not only working specifically with the clients, but it's also coordinating with the other service providers to make sure that we're not duplicating services and also identifying the level of service of each client. So that's something that's important. Currently, they have identified over 200 unsheltered neighbors. And so, you know, again, each client requires a different level of care. But now with their four case managers, they'll be a little bit more robust. So 125 will be their goal, but they will probably serve more than that as more volunteers come online.
All right. With that, this is a public hearing. I do have one card for 5.01.
Greg Scott, on the caper report, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. I'm referring to page seven of the report, CR 20 Affordable Housing, 91.520B. Okay. It goes on, discuss the difference between goals and outcomes and problems encountered in meeting these goals. Goes on, discuss how outcomes will impact future annual action plans. And I get to page nine, first paragraph, quote, "2093, 2121 and 2139 Railroad Avenue. In 2018, the city approved a development plan for the site, which include 130-unit affordable workforce housing component to be developed by Eden Housing." Okay. I'm confused here. Referendum, initiative. I thought the city council approved an initiative for the ballot last year, which puts on the City Park Plan on the initiative for the people of Livermore to vote. The City Park Plan has 84 workforce housing component in it. But I don't see that mentioned in the caper report. So is the development plan really passed? I mean, I would have thought that the opposition would have done a referendum if the development plan was passed. But let's say it is passed. I thought the initiative was passed for the ballot. I didn't think it was a dumb deal. I thought we're a democracy and it's voting. And where's the disclosure to the United States Housing and Urban Development Department for that option that it may not be 130 workforce housing units components? It might be 84 if the Central Park Plan is...
Could you hold the time just for a moment, please, Ms. Bunting? Just so we can clarify this. There is the city-approved plan. And the city-approved plan, and goodness knows, there's been so much confusion about this. And unfortunately, it's deliberate. But there's 130 units in the city-approved plan.
Okay.
Now, there is a drawing based upon an initiative. Now, that initiative has not yet gone to the ballot. There was a referendum about the downtown specific plan last November. That's a different beast. And that was the one that we adopted and that's the one I referred to earlier. The city-approved plan has the 130 housing units in it.
Right.
The drawing based upon the initiative has 84 units. But that has not gone to the ballot. That has been approved to go to the ballot in November of 2020.
Right.
And that's when that will be voted on. It has no authority until it goes onto the ballot.
Okay.
A referendum rescinds the action of the council. An initiative doesn't take effect until it goes to the ballot. So the city-approved plan is 130 units. This initiative has 84. But that has no force of law. It has not yet gone onto the ballot.
Okay. But it could be not 130 units here.
Right. But we don't want to wait for a year and a quarter until we can take, until we need to pursue support. So, okay.
It just doesn't seem...
Just wanted to clarify that.
It seems like the Housing and Urban Development Department should be aware of that. Under the housing, the goals, the number of homeless households to be provided for, just 21. An actual 17 is a good part of it, but for the public, you know, it's, there are 179 unsheltered out there, 264 by the point in time count. We're talking about less than 10% here. Number of non-homeless households to be provided affordable housing units, 10. Well, you go and stand on the bridge across the 580 freeway and how long does it count? How long does it take to count 10 cars? Today is the United States Climate Summit in front of the United Nations. Each commuter is putting out over 14 tons of carbon dioxide, which persists, 40% of it persists 100 years. It's a drop in the bucket. Number of special needs households to be provided affordable housing units, zero. Okay. You know, in the legend development, what I understand, at the Growth Brothers, 222 units. Zero affordable housing units, as far as I understand. Okay. Goals, right.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Bringing it back to the council, we need to close the public hearing. Comments from the council? By Smear?
Just a point about the Growth Brothers. I mean, he's right about the units and they are market rate rental units and they'll pay an in lieu fee. Is that true?
They are market rate rental units and based on state of California and law. We do not have an inclusionary requirement of our rental.
We don't for rental?
We do not because it was considered a form of rent control, which was outlawed by the state of California. So our ownership units have an inclusionary requirement because you are permitted to do that at the local level. We are not permitted at the local level to require rental units to have an inclusionary component.
Thank you for that clarity.
However, there are affordable units in the downtown approved plan and also Chestnut Square.
Sure.
Councilmember Warner?
I just wanted to thank you for your work on this. And I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the 2018-19 caper.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Kuma here. We had a motion. So any other comments?
I just wanted to add my thanks. This is a very, I know how hard the work has been on this and how hard you've worked on this and how hard the entire staff has. Thank you.
So again, thank you very much. You know, I hear complaints. I go on Nextdoor a lot and I hear a lot of people complaining about what we're doing. I hear a lot of what solutions are not. I'm looking for what the solutions actually are. Tonight, we heard that housing is not going to reduce homelessness. But that's what we've heard, that the way to get people out of homelessness is to provide the housing. There's, we heard one possible suggestion was a commons. But of a commons, if people don't have automobiles, as was mentioned tonight, and they're living under commons, they're still unsheltered. They're still homeless. So that's not a solution. No one in Santa Clara, San Francisco, Contra Costa, or Alameda County has come up with a solution. In 2010, we were assured by 2020 that homelessness would be eradicated. There was a plan in the works to eradicate homelessness. It went up 43% in Alameda County over the last two years. So we are piloting ideas right now in hopes that things, something, we'll find something that works. But nobody's found something that works yet. Years ago, the voters of this state passed AB 218. And that required a nexus for any fee directly to the purpose. So if you wanted to have a fee to counteract homelessness, there had to be a direct connection with what that fee was being charged for. So it's, you just can't create a fee, a funding stream to solve this problem. And any new tax requires a two-thirds vote of the public to create a new tax to attack this problem. And the only other way that we can get funding is to reduce services, either by cutting police, cutting fire, cutting library services. So we're taking the very limited funding, these CDBG funds, and we're trying to maximize the benefit. So yeah, we aren't solving the problem. We're trying to. We're trying to pilot things that'll work. We've got a subcommittee that's working very hard and we've got staff that's working very hard. But if people have ideas that have been proven to work, we're more than happy to listen to those and to try to adopt those. A lot of these take resources. A commons would take resources because you need to have somebody manage those. Of course, you have to have conditions on if there's people under the influence of drugs or alcohol. These are very difficult problems to deal with, mental illness as well. So it's a very difficult problem. Understand that we are committed to try to find solutions and we are also looking for answers like everybody else throughout the region. We're trying to find the things that work. But as once was presented at the Kaufman Foundation, we're working on homeless issues. This isn't going to be a silver bullet. It's going to be silver buckshot. It's going to take a lot of efforts to solve this. But we're committed to work on this and to do the best we very, very well can. So, and by Smear Carling?
I want to bring up the biohazard and cleanup services again. This is, these are Block by Block's going to do this. Is that right? That's the company we're going to contract with?
Correct.
And they're mostly going to be located downtown?
Not mostly, but they're going to start out in the downtown and then work their way onto our campus and to other hotspots where we're having homeless biohazard issues.
I think we need to reconsider the evenings. I still don't understand why you picked Monday through Friday, so.
And we'll reassess that and...
I would like you to consider that, yeah.
Okay. Any further comments? That, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Young. Okay. Moving on to, that concludes our public hearings. On to 6.01. This is the Second Amendment to the Agreement for the Development of the Rodeo Grounds and the Sunken Garden Area as a civic center and parks recreation area with the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. Okay. Mr. Ross?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Marchand. Members of the city council. Tonight's item is proposed amendment to the Stockman's Association Agreement, which would allow the Stockman's greater review authority over the uses surrounding Stockman's Park. In January 2018, as part of the downtown planning process, the city and the Stockman's Association amended their original agreement for the development of the Civic Center campus. The amended agreement allowed the city to develop a portion of the Civic Center site with senior and veterans housing in exchange for the construction of Stockman's Park in downtown. The amended agreement defined easement boundaries for Stockman's Park as well as the surrounding commercial and cultural uses and granted the Stockman's Association the ability to review and provide comment on these surrounding uses as proposed under the downtown plan. A community group has put forward an initiative, which will be decided at a general election on November 3, 2020. This initiative process presents some uncertainty and potentially affects the Stockman's Association's vision for Stockman's Park in downtown and also the city's ability to fulfill its obligations under the agreement. The Stockman's Association has requested an amendment, which would grant approval authority over the surrounding commercial and cultural uses to ensure that those proposed developments do not overshadow or negatively impact Stockman's Park or the Veterans Monument. Staff is recommending the city council authorize the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the agreement, allowing the Stockman's Association to review and approve the surrounding commercial and cultural uses and also memorializing minor refinements to the park easement boundaries that would facilitate execution of the approved downtown plan. The surrounding uses would still require city review and permit approval in addition to the Stockman's authority. Mr. Finster from the Stockman's Association is here and has a few remarks, after which staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Finster?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight representing the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. And we'd like to see this amendment go through. I don't want to say we're worried about it, but we're getting concerned about this initiative coming up and who knows what else might be coming down the pipe. We'd like to see this park built... We'd like to see this park built in the way it was intended to be built with the agreement that we have with you, the city. We don't want to see a bunch of buildings get moved around, buildings overshadowing things like the Veterans Monument. And we sure don't want to see, like we heard tonight, that you said, Mr. Mayor, about maybe pulling out that statue, that monument to these veterans and replacing it with a water fountain. That is not the intent of our agreement. At this point, we've had a great working relationship with the city and the city staff and us with the Rodeo Association would like to thank you because it's been great working with you on this so far. So, along with us and the large majority of this community, we're looking forward to this continuing to move forward and want to thank you once again. So, if there's any questions?
Questions for Mr. Finster? Well, thank you for your patience and waiting for 57 years.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. It's going to be worth it, it really is.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Finster. Comments, questions?
Yeah, a couple of...
Got a couple of cards.
Oh, you do? I'll wait.
Okay. Questions at this point? Okay, great, thank you. I do have two cards for the public comment. We have Jean King for Tamara Royce and Alan Burnham.
Good evening, Council. I am Jean King, but I'm reading a statement from Tamara Royce. The Citizens for Livermore Central Park is committed to the implementation of the existing agreement between the city and the Stockman's Association. Tonight, we find ourselves in the position of defending the rights of the Stockman's Association under its existing agreement with the city. The comments in the staff report and the proposed resolution that the Central Park Plan Initiative creates uncertainty about the rights of the Stockman's Association under its agreement with the city are not true. The substantive provisions of the Central Park Plan Initiative implement the existing agreement. This means that under the initiative, the Stockman's Association will have the right to review and comment on the design of the Stockman's Park as well as the design and the placement of the surrounding cultural and commercial uses. The initiative does not change those rights in any way, shape, or form. The resolution proposed by the city staff tonight proposes to revise the Stockman's Park Agreement to provide the Stockman's Association with veto power over the city's consideration of the cultural facility and commercial uses. However, a local government may not contract away its power to make decisions involving land uses to a third party. Thus, while the resolution may sound like a good idea, the legal implication of giving the Stockman's Association veto power may have the effect of invalidating rights of the Stockman's Association under the existing agreement. The Citizens for Livermore Central Park are not willing to risk the rights of the Stockman's Association. We are committed to implementation of the existing provisions in the agreement between the city and the Stockman's Association. The initiative reflects that commitment. So, this is signed by Tamara Royce, 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 the Secretary, Citizens for Livermore Central Park, and I'm handing this statement to the clerk so that it is accurately reflected in the record. Thank you very much.
Mr. Burnham? Thank you, Ms. King.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I'm Alan Burnham in Findlay Way. I speak tonight not as a representative of any organization, but as a person who is involved in discussions leading up to the Stockman Park Design and Unified Plan. I met Lisa for the first time, Lisa Traumovich, Dave Van Darcy Cant, and Dave Finster through these discussions. I also had private discussions with Joan Sepala and Jean King about their various plans. So, despite what some people have said, it's downright silly to complain that any non-public discussion about any given downtown plan invalidates it. Unlike some, I thought it was appropriate to include the community group ideas into the process, the outreach process. That said, co-location of a Science Center, Black Box Theater, and Veteran's Statue in saddle-shaped park was central to the Stockman Park concept of celebrating our heritage and the unified plan. They were placed together to be synergistic. The location of Black Box Theater next to the park was specifically chosen to support the community events in the grassy area, including rodeo events. The co-location of the Science Center and the Black Box Theater were, was chosen to support mutually, mutual events that would be held. The Central Park drawing absolutely fails to meet the objectives agreed to by the Stockman and those who participated in those discussion. I don't presume ill intentions on anyone's part, even if they seem inconsiderate, given the implications of their actions. It's usually simply because they are misinformed. As an example, I note a recent letter saying that the city should not be bankrolling the Science Center and Black Box Theater. Well, an informed person would know that the city is not. They are privately funded, as I'm sure all you know, and this is the kind of thing that we are dealing with every week. In fact, we can build 260 affordable housing units, some downtown and some just down the street, as you know, plus have so much open space downtown and locations for the Science Center and Black Box Theater because of the generous actions of the Stockman. The cultural core character of Stockman's Park is due to seven community interest groups, not seven self-interest groups. It's unfortunate that some people don't understand the difference.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Okay, that's it for the cards that I have, so we're going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, could you put the picture of the park back up there? Because, you know, we talked about earlier today, there's a lot of misinformation campaign going around. I just want to be clear, Stockman's Park is this whole that we see here minus the retail and that you see the label Stockman's Park in the middle on the grassy area. Some people have had the misinformation campaign in saying that's all there is, the Stockman's Park. I just want to make it clear, Stockman's Park is the whole and that the, as shown here, the Black Box Theater and the Science Center are within Stockman's Park. And I point that out because the misinformation campaign has been trying to say it's only this little grassy area. So, you know, I frankly wish that we could have truth in advertising here, but that does seem to be a problem. So, the other question I've got, it was alluded to with the statement that Jean King read from Tamara Royce, that somehow this wasn't legal what we're doing or inappropriate is, I presume, it's been my experience, eight years on this council, that items are not brought before us that are not legally proper.
So, we've reviewed the clauses that are included in the agreement with the Stockman's Rodeo Association and we are comfortable, we understand the theory of law that was raised at the podium. That, however, deals with the city's application of its rules, that is not, you did not give up your legislative authority to approve plans for a product. This is prior to that and this is the land use right that's associated with the Stockman's Rodeo Association because they hold a park easement here. I would like to point out that even though these comments were couched as trying to protect the Stockman, I would draw the council and the public's attention to this document already. This clause already exists in the current agreement. The clause gives the Stockman's Rodeo Association the right to have veto authority over the design of the park and the placement of that monument. So, while it was couched as somewhat of a defensive motion, I didn't read it that way. I was actually startled by this and I thought that that was a threat, but that's, no, it's just my reaction. But the legal, the clauses are legal and they would be defensible and we would prevail if challenged.
Yeah, I took it as a not-so-subtle threat. And the reason why I think the Stockman have a right to be concerned, I'll start off with a little bit of history here. When I first announced the deal, the third question that Joan Sepala asked me was, we don't have to name it after the Stockman, do we? Because she doesn't like that heritage park. So, she was horrified at the thought that there would be a park downtown named after the Stockman. And that we've seen in the initiative that they have, I think it's a 41% encroachment of the zoning language in the initiative, encroachment on the Stockman's Park. You'll also see that in some of the initial diagrams that were put out by Joan Sepala and Jean King, that they put the words "Central Park" on top of the land that we have designated as Stockman's Park. So, this is clear, you know, in my mind, the word I use is claim jumping. The other thing that I would say is that Jean King herself stood up here at the podium and said, "I like Stock, we like Stockman Park exactly as it is," and you can go look at the video recording. If that were the case, if that were the truth, then they wouldn't be encroaching on Stockman's Park 41% on the initiative. So, I think that this amendment to the agreement is entirely appropriate and I'm frankly outraged at what they are doing and trying to modify the Stockman's Park. I think we need to honor that agreement. It was made in good faith. We got tremendous value out of the agreement with the Stockman. We've got 140 houses or so just down the street that we would not otherwise have, and we have a beautiful celebration of our heritage. So, this attempt to hijack it for their own purposes is outrageous to me, so I'm fully in favor of this amendment.
Vice, okay, Councilmember Cooper?
I'll go quick. I just think we've, you know, the Stockman and the city have worked together as partners so well on this project and I do sense an underpinning with, you know, what the prevailing culture so far has been, given anything we happen to do with downtown, that I want the Stockman to be able to protect their interests as much as possible. So, I'm absolutely for this amendment. I think this comes at a perfect time.
Councilmember Rouvenro?
So, I go back to the beginning of when this project was proposed and the idea which was expressed a couple of times by Mr. Finster and I think by Mr. Burnham, that the synergy between the different elements is key. One of the things that disturbed me about the Central Park drawing, which is one iteration of what could happen should the initiative pass, not the only iteration, just one iteration, is that the Science and Society Center was at one corner and the Black Box Theater was at another, thereby losing that entirely. And I've mentioned Don Stasis' comments several times because they continue to guide me going forward, which is that the purpose of all of these pieces, of the synergy that's created by all of Stockman's Park, is to allow people who are new to the city. And I find it wonderful that the Stockman, who represent the history of Livermore, are looking to the future. They want the people who come here, new people, to be able to look back at that heritage and have a place where they can remember that as we move forward into the future. That, to me, is what cities need to be about and I am so appreciative that that is what this, the Stockman have allowed us to do.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Yes, thanks. I too support the amendment. I find it utterly disingenuous for Tammy Royce to suggest that we're invalidating the rights of the Stockman when they're the ones that have asked for it. I just don't understand, and this, I think I've said this before, I just find it remarkable that this small group of people has decided they think they know best for what the, what each of the individual groups go. I think Mr. Burnham brought it up again. I mean, they've worked together to provide the synergism amongst a variety of things and yet the Central Park Plan completely breaks apart each of those elements, again because they think they know better than the rest of us. I just find it remarkable that this just keeps continuing and I completely support this amendment.
Thank you. So, maybe I've been a little slow on the uptake here, but again, we saw this park plan come in and as Councilmember Warner pointed out, that this is all integral parts of Stockman's Park. And I just had this epiphany that, yeah, I spent a lot of time at Golden Gate Park growing up and part of my growing into an oceanographer and the aquarium. So, what I now understand from the Central, the Central Park drawing, is the only thing that they believe is considered a park is grass. So, that means that the Steinhardt Aquarium is not part of Golden Gate Park and the DeYoung Museum wouldn't be considered part of Golden Gate Park, nor would the Conservatory, because they're not grass. But yet, those are absolutely key elements which make Golden Gate Park the remarkable place that it is. And we have these key elements which were created as part of this park, which are absolutely key to its success. The black box plays out into Stockman's Park and provides services for the Stockman's Park and that there's a synergy between the Science and Society Center, as Mr. Burnham pointed out. So, all of these elements work together to create this park. A park is not just grass. There are a lot of other key elements that all work together with that remarkable synergy. And it was pointed out, the community came together to create this and as was pointed out in this council chambers, we had thousands of people come together to work on the city-approved plan. And as we saw here in this council chamber, there were two people, only two people, that had any input on the drawing or on the initiative. And I think that's very telling. And as Vice Mayor Carling points out, it's remarkable that we can have thousands of people come together to create this plan and two people say that, no, this isn't what you want. So, I would absolutely support this because the Stockman have been waiting 57 years and I certainly appreciate your patience. It's time to get this done. It's time to deliver the park that this community has wanted for 57 years. And with that, I think I'm waiting for a motion. Councilmember Warner?
So, I move we approve this Second Amendment to the agreement with the Stockman.
Approved. Approved by Councilmember Warner or moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On to, appropriate, stormwater.
It's green.
Yes, it's stormwater, okay. I will not break into stormy weather, okay?
Thank you.
No, no. I already made a promise to the Vice Mayor. He took me up on it. Okay, Julie Chu and Bob Vin.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the council. I'm Bob Vin, Assistant City Engineer, and I'd like to introduce you to Julie Chu. She is an Associate Civil Engineer. She's been with the city about 10 months now and I believe this is the first time she's had the opportunity to present before you.
Welcome.
We will be presenting the Green Infrastructure Plan.
Uh-oh.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Yeah, that little switch sometimes.
It's starting off.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Okay. And my mic is not on. All right. Okay, the Green Infrastructure Plan is a new requirement of the municipal regional stormwater permit. The MRP, in short, is a permit which allows us to discharge into the bay. So, what is green infrastructure, you may ask? Simply put, green infrastructure is treatment and slowing down stormwater runoff before it enters into our storm drain system. To your left, you'll see a traditional storm drain system where water is just collected and directed into the storm drain system as fast as possible without treatment. To your right, you'll see a green infrastructure being implemented where the stormwater runoff is being treated and slowed down, given the chance to evaporate and infiltrate into the ground. given the chance to evaporate and infiltrate into the ground. Stormwater can pick up pollutants such as oils, bacteria, sediment, and metals. Green infrastructure will remove the majority of these pollutants before they enter into our creeks and ultimately into the bay. Green infrastructure will slow down and reduce the amount of water running into our storm drain systems and reduce the number of costly flooding events. Green infrastructure can increase your property value and enhance communities by making them more beautiful, sustainable, and wildlife-friendly. When implemented broadly, it can mitigate against the urban heat, urban heat island effect and climate change by infiltrating water off hot pavements, providing shade, and minimizing the impervious surface. So moving to the plan. The plan provides guidance for identifying, prioritizing, and implementing, tracking, and reporting of these green infrastructure projects. It also sets goals for reducing the overall long-term adverse effects to the water quality of urbanization and our receiving waters. It also identifies green infrastructure implementation targets for the years 2020, 2030, and 2040. Green infrastructure can be implemented in many ways. Here are some examples of how you can implement them. I'm going to direct your attention to the upper left-hand corner. This is an example of how green infrastructure can be incorporated into a traffic calming project. As you can see, the curb line has been brought out to slow down traffic and decrease the crossing distance for pedestrians. Behind the curb line, you'll see that a bio-retention basin has been placed, where runoff from the street will be treated through vegetation and engineered soil. Livermore has been a leader in stormwater treatment before it was even, before green infrastructure was even termed green infrastructure. In 1997, the city adopted the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan. It included policies requiring grass-lined swales and detention basins wherever feasible. As a result, the city is currently treating four hundred twenty-seven acres of runoff through green infrastructure. In addition to this four hundred twenty-seven acres the city is already treating, we've identified six projects which could potentially incorporate green infrastructure by the year 2020. This is totaling an additional eight acres by 2020. The plan has also set forth targets for the year, set forth targets, fourteen for public projects and twenty-eight acres for private projects for each of these subsequent ten-year periods, 2030 and 2040. I'm going to turn it back over to Bob to discuss funding and the cost of these projects.
All right, so stock costs, as Julie mentioned, there's lots of different ways to implement green infrastructure. So the costs vary widely depending on the type of improvement that you select and the location and specific design requirements. But the example that Julie showed, kind of a bulb out with a grassy treatment area in the middle, similar to what we've been doing for decades in Livermore. And something like that would cost about $180,000 to treat one acre of runoff. So using that as an average to hit our proposed 2030 targets and 2040 targets, it would cost the city about $250,000 annually. Now, this is an unfunded state mandate. We have, the plan actually identifies some potential funding sources that we could use to pay for it. It includes grants and partnering with other agencies such as Caltrans. Caltrans has a program, because they have to treat the state highways and freeways. So they're looking to partner with local agencies, and they're bringing money to help treat the state facility as well as local facilities on local land. We also are looking to perhaps leverage private development. So we'll be looking at bringing back some legislation for the council to consider that would require a development to treat runoff off of more than their property and fronting roads. So that might be a way to help offset the costs. And finally, redirecting existing funding that the city uses for capital improvements. For example, if we didn't have any other money, we could accomplish our proposed targets by spending about three and a half percent of the annual pavement maintenance budget on green infrastructure projects. So it's about that level of investment that we're proposing. The other thing to note, the targets right now are voluntary. They are not mandatory. And different cities are coming up with different targets. Our targets are consistent with many of the other cities in this area. But we do expect that as the regional permit is updated in the future, that the regional board will make these targets mandatory. So that concludes our presentation, and Julie and I are available for questions.
Questions? Vice Mayor Carling.
So you said you had four hundred and some acres already in green infrastructure? Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Something like that? And that's mostly what these catch basins that housing developments have been putting in recently? That kind of thing?
Yes, it's, they mostly treat the water through grassy swales that are adjacent to the roads. Some are treated in larger detention pond areas.
Yes, okay. So I get what's going on here. But this, the 2020 milestone date, you said there are no requirements.
That's correct.
So six acres doesn't seem like a lot, but maybe, help me understand whether that's reasonable or not.
Well, we're taking credit for the four hundred thirty-seven acres that we've already done before it was a requirement. So in essence, by 2020, we'll have four hundred thirty-seven plus any additional that we can accomplish.
Okay.
And the ones that we have included in the plan are ones that are underway.
Well, that's what I sort of thought. I mean, some of these things like chestnut townhomes and so on, that's something that's already well underway, right? Okay. So that's how you selected that, and that's the guidelines you used? I mean, are other communities doing a few acres at a time, do you know?
Yeah, it varies, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Warner.
Could you explain a little bit more detail on what the impact of this process is on our groundwater where we pump?
Well, I think implementation of this over time would probably result in more groundwater recharge.
Well, yeah, I would imagine that. But I have, one of your diagrams here says that the bay ends up cleaner.
Yes.
So the obverse of that is the groundwater ends up dirtier. Or how do I think about this? Is it, whatever these impurities are captured at the surface level and they never go down to the, I mean, that's what I would imagine, but that's what I was asking you to say.
So off the surface, you generally have several types of impurities. One of those includes metals. Metals at very low levels at the edge of a street essentially are metabolized by the plant material. So that's why it's important to have swale material that actually has something growing in it. Hydrocarbons generally attach to the leaves of the plant material. And so that's why usually some of the swales basically then, when that leaf litter is disposed of by the plant, that's at such a low level that it doesn't concentrate to the level of ultimately being a problem. So the idea is that they're designed to have those impurities dealt with at the surface and metabolized and controlled and trapped by the plant material. That's why it's really important that those swales be sized properly for the amount of water, because if they get overloaded, then you can have a problem. And so that is ultimately the system we've developed so that we don't, you know, create a problem with groundwater.
So is there a program to monitor the health of these swales so that we understand what's going on?
That's a great point. And I think one of the things we can do is, the main way you monitor is to make sure the plant material is healthy. And the plant material being unhealthy is your first indicator that something's going on at the surface that you're not able to deal with. We don't have something more formal than that, but that might be an interesting piece to take a look at.
Councilmember Monroe.
So there's several questions, not always which may be relevant or be answerable by you. One is, the term unfunded mandate always gets my attention because it's nice to be told you're supposed to do something, but then the question is, maybe this is a way to get money to grow on trees? I'm not sure. That said, you know, making something greener sounds like a really fine idea to me, particularly as we're looking at making the world greener, if possible. I like the idea that we're looking for other sources. It sounds like a reasonable idea to pull a small amount of money from other places. But I guess my question is, how can we think about, and this is where it probably goes beyond your, you know, it's probably not to you I'm directing it, but maybe to staff or maybe to my fellow council members, how can we think about pointing out that this is something that needs to be paid for because it will benefit us all? Can we go to the state and say, "Can we get more money? Can we go to our citizens?" How do we think about this?
One of the things that your staff, in conjunction with other tri-valley cities, was considering in response to questions of what could the state legislature do to help, was of funding essentially the unfunded mandate dealing with stormwater. From trash capture to greening of streets, all of those are societal goods that come from state legislation and come from state direction. And your local government staffs here believe that that's the appropriate way to fund those things as well. When they're of statewide concern, when they have statewide impact, we all should collectively fund that through state funds rather than individual project by project. So from that perspective, if we were going to add that to the list of things that we would be talking to our state legislators about was funding in this particular case. So in this particular unfunded mandate, we felt a legislative response was appropriate.
Well, that sounds good to me. All right, so that was one question. And the second question is, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, well, the city has a certain amount that it wants to make green. But one of the questions that I get is with regard to particularly building, is how do we deal with water resources? How do we deal with the fact that we do not have unlimited resources? And so one of the questions I would have is, is there a way that we can take this and make it more public and encourage our residents to participate in this in some way, way, shape, or form? Again, this may be beyond the scope of this question, but, you know, when else to ask it?
Well, clearly, as we have discussions with our community about our asset management, and we view assets as having, you know, a hundred-year, two-hundred-year lifespan, there's a lot of things that become possible in the very long term as you're replacing assets and as you're asking the community to participate in that replacement that might not be feasible or efficient in the short run. So I think that should be part of our discussion as we discuss all of our assets and making them more resilient over time.
So I'm not just talking about the city assets. I'm talking about, you know, if I am doing something. Can we help the, our residents also think not only about their participation in the public good, which is important, but also in their, very important, but also their participation as they are thinking about their own properties? And I don't, maybe that was an answer, but I miss it if so.
No, it wasn't the focus of the answer. And I think it is very important as we put out information, you know, as we have in the past few years about water-efficient landscaping, what to think about as you're redoing your yard, how to both protect structures, which is getting the water away from the edge of those, but maybe how to deal with infiltration more effectively on your private property site as you're redoing landscaping or doing home projects or improving a commercial property.
Councilmember Cumber. Questions, comments? Okay. I have no cards on this, so there's no public comments. Do a motion.
Yeah, I'll move we accept staff recommendation.
And I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Carling, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Six point oh three, the commemorative flag display policy. We discussed this a couple weeks back, and now it's back, goes. It wasn't that long ago, but it was a while back, okay.
Looks like Christine's ready to.
Okay. Take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager. And yes, it was just a little over a couple weeks ago, on June 10th, that council directed staff to provide commemorative flag policy options. Staff reviewed a number of flag policies and has prepared a policy for council's consideration this evening. Alternatively, staff would request that council provide further direction so that we can prepare appropriate policy revisions, if that is of your choosing. Historically, the city has displayed the United States flag, the State of California flag, and the City of Livermore flag in accordance with federal and state law. The city does not currently have a policy governing display of commemorative flags. Staff's research found that those jurisdictions with flag policies do so under the government speech doctrine. In contrast to the First Amendment's free speech clause, government speech allows the council to speak as the government, advancing its own speech without requiring viewpoint neutrality, so long as that speech doesn't involve religious or voting preferences. The city's flag poles are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. Therefore, the proposed policy is structured to ensure any commemorative flags flown would be considered government speech as a form of government expression. The proposed policy provides the following process for commemorative flag display. Flags would be displayed only as requested by a council member and then authorized by a resolution of the city council, and displayed at City Hall below the City of Livermore flag for a designated period of time. And that concludes staff's brief presentation, but we are available for questions you may have.
Questions for staff?
Any thoughts on who provides the flag?
We have thought about that, and it could be done in a couple of ways. It could be provided by an organization that's affiliated with the commemorative group, or it could be provided by the city itself.
Well, one of the suggestions that I had is a slight tweak to this would be in that regard that if a request was made to a council member for a particular flag, that those requests be from a responsible, recognized, five oh one C three, for example, but some recognized organization where it's a, there is a responsible party behind the request, and then presumably they would provide the flag.
That could be done, if that's what the council desired.
Yeah, I don't think that's such a good idea, but.
So you don't want anybody responsible?
No, because I don't think that's the, I mean, if we wanted to fly the rainbow flag, for example, what's the five oh one C three for that? Or Hispanic Heritage Month or something?
I believe the.
So my point is, is that I don't think you can always expect to fly a flag that may necessarily be associated with a specific five oh one C three. That's all.
Right, we could, a council member could make that request. But if someone comes to the council.
Of course we could, sure.
Then if someone comes to the council.
I just don't think we need to make it a requirement, is I guess my point.
Well, my thought was to have someone that was some responsible organization behind the request. A council member can make the request. It doesn't have to be made, but the council member can initiate that.
Of course.
But if someone comes to the council, it would be presumably from a responsible party. That was my suggestion.
And we could give them the responsibility to get the flag, but it doesn't have to, my point, it doesn't have to be a five oh one C three.
My point is that some recognized responsible party. That's my point.
It doesn't have to be a five oh one C three to do that, I don't think.
So definition of a responsible party then?
Well, I mean, somebody comes up and says they want us to fly the rainbow flag, we could say to them, okay, we'll do that, but you need to come up with the flag. And they would say, yeah, sure. I think. I mean, if they're gonna make the request, I think they ought to be able to be, have the responsibility to provide the flag.
If they're not responsible, though...
What? I know.
I haven't got any cards. So we'll open the public comment period, and seeing no cards, I'll close that and bring it back to the council.
No, I'm happy.
Okay. Are you really? Okay, alright. Okay, what's the, what's the pleasure of the council? Justice Runcor, comments?
You know what, not a heck of a lot, because I've always been really happy with the American flag, the state flag, and our city flag, if we have one. And that's always worked for me, however, I'm comfortable with the depths that the proposed policy is going to, so I'm not uncomfortable with that.
I think this is worth giving, the framework looks like it's worth giving a shot to. I would agree with Vice Mayor Carling that 501(c)(3) strikes me as being the, too restrictive a way to vet the requests. What I would like to see is us adopt this policy for the next year and then evaluate at the end of that year, and if a year isn't enough time, two years, but for some reasonable period of time to evaluate how many requests come in, how well it's working, are we getting requests from groups that we have questions about? One of the benefits of having it be council's speech is that we get to make the decision, and it does happen up here every time. So, it seems like giving this a shot for the next year would be the way I'd want to go.
Yeah, I'm okay with the policy and especially the statement that we make the final decision. I understand the thought that we just don't want random stuff coming up here, but as long as it's understood that we make the decision, and then we'll, you know, deal with the consequences of us making a decision if we turn somebody down that we, you know, deem as inappropriate, but I think we can do that.
Well, as long as it is the city's speech, that this is a, this is our decision, then I find with that. I said, I was just looking for some sort of responsible party, but if the council doesn't seem that necessary...
I liked your thought of the responsible party, I can understand why a particular type of corporation or something may not be the way to do it, but I think as we realize it's our accountability, our decision, and that just any random group does not have a right to insist that we fly any particular flag. So that's the point, we're not, because we flew one, doesn't mean we have to, you know, that we've set a precedent that we fly all. Right? I mean, that's the point here, we're not setting a...
No precedent set. Okay, alright, very good. Okay, somebody should make a motion?
I'll move, we accept staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Vice Mayor Carling, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion?
I had actually a couple other comments that just occurred to me. One is, if we are requesting that the group supply the flag, we might want to discuss size and have that be part of the, you know, too big, too small, does it need to be rectangular? I think those things probably should be defined further.
Nothing larger than ours?
For example. No, you know, a octagon, I don't know, do we want an octagon flag?
If somebody has a flag that they want to fly, we've already said it's up to the council to decide whether they're going to fly that. I mean, there's also triangular flags. So it's, it's up to the council to make that decision.
Point.
And if that's the size that the responsible party has, then we consider that. Okay, so any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously, thank you.
I did have one other point to bring up with regard to this, which is that when this came up originally, it was when we were, it was requested that we fly the rainbow flag. We know that Livermore Pride is coming up, is that something we can take up under this? Or would we have to do it, how would that, how would, would it be possible to do that before October 19th?
So, yes, if you initiated that this evening, you'd have something on your agenda for the 14th.
And then we could say yes, and then it would be...
Immediate.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's nine o'clock, you want to take out a five-minute break, and then we'll get the last item, six point oh four? Or do you guys sort of power on through?
You could power on through.
Okay, alright, we usually take a quick break at nine, but let's go to six point oh four. This is the Municipal Code Amendment 19005, an ordinance requiring the licensure of tobacco retailers. We had talked about this a while back, now it's back.
Very good. Good evening, Jason Alcala, your city attorney, presenting the ordinance before you this evening. This ordinance looks very similar to what was presented to you earlier this year. This is your tobacco retail licensing ordinance. When it was first presented to you, it had two components, one a licensing component, and a second component which is with regard to the prohibition of the sale of certain tobacco products, those being flavored tobacco products, electronic smoking devices, and electronic smoking device fluid. As we were aware, that ordinance was referended. And that council made, at its last meeting, made a decision to, rather than to repeal that ordinance, to set it for the ballot for March 2020, for the community to vote to approve that particular item. It's been suspended at this time, and is pending a vote by the people. Now, the law does allow you to re-adopt or reintroduce those aspects of an ordinance that were not controversial or that were amended and revised to address the item that was controversial. When that referendum was submitted, and as you're hearing at the last meeting, the proponents' advocates, being Jewel, indicated that they did not oppose the licensing aspect of the ordinance. I have not had the opportunity to follow up with them since that meeting to see if their opinion has changed. What we have before us is just the licensing aspect of that. We have reached out to the community groups that were advocating for the ordinance in the first place. That uncertainty of Jewel's position as we stand here today, whether they would adopt that same position or they would still be inclined to pursue opposition to the retail licensing is an open question. I believe the law would support you in taking this action here today, based upon the information that was presented during the referendum. The community groups, however, when they speak today, will ask you to not introduce this particular ordinance. And their desire is to avoid any additional controversy and allow the ordinance that you previously adopted to stand on its own for March, the March ballot. So you have before you an ordinance that you could introduce today. It's not without uncertainty, but it does, the law does provide guidance that it would withstand scrutiny. However, the community groups I think will hear from this evening, and they asked me to convey to you today, is that they would prefer you not to introduce the ordinance, but rather table it, let's have the election in March, and then figure out how we respond after that date. With that, I'm available for questions, with me as well is Steve Riley from the Plank Division as well, if you have any technical questions about the ordinance itself, but with that, I'm available.
Okay. Questions for the city attorney? Do we have cards for six point oh, okay, interesting. Wow, there's a tremendous amount of input on this last time, and no input tonight? Okay, in that case, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council.
So straightforward to me, they've requested that we table it, I'm in favor of that.
I would agree with that, too. I think it kind of makes it a little smoother and a little bit easier to deal with when we're dealing with one election and don't have additional issues popping up.
I don't know what we're afraid of. I'd like to create the TRL tonight, but...
Well, my feeling is that with the TRL now, we could actually affect benefit immediately.
Yeah.
And we could start the oversight, we could start the police oversight of the tobacco retailers to ensure that they are not selling to underage students or children.
So that provision isn't really dependent on this particular ordinance, is it?
Well, the TRL gives us the revenue to do that.
To do the enforcement.
Yeah, I understand that, I just, it's already happening. You're right, yeah.
So I'm somewhat surprised that we could actually take positive action tonight to create a TRL and start our own oversight of the tobacco retailers. But if the folks of, behind the last initiative don't want any further action, then I would agree with them that this is, obviously, they've thought out a great deal. My thought is that we could derive some immediate benefit, but I'm kind of with you, that I'd prefer to take action immediately, but if the consensus is to take no further action, I certainly wouldn't want to interrupt, you know, what they're working on.
I think they've, they've, the community has driven this process from the start. The community will need to be out there working to ensure that the referendum does not pass, assuming that they want the ordinance to stand, which I think was a safe assumption.
To affirm the ordinance, we wish to affirm the ordinance.
Yes, yes. Yes, for a yes vote, correct?
Say that?
Wait, is that, well, I am just saying that that's what you need on a referendum to affirm an ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, I'm not, I'm not arguing that one needs to do one or the other, I'm just clarifying.
So you can say that as the council, that's fine, but just to be clear, since, once the ordinance is referended, it is suspended by operation of law.
Right.
The ordinance itself goes to vote in March and will not take effect until it's approved by the voters, so you're looking for a yes vote in March.
Thank you, that's like he said. Therefore, I think it is important that we be responsive in this case, and so, yeah.
Do you want me to motion until that effect?
Sure. I...
Motion to that effect.
You moved to table it.
Moved to table it indefinitely.
Second.
Okay, moved to table by Councilmember Rose, seconded by Councilmember Warner. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one with Vice Mayor Carling opposing, it does pass. So with that, we are at matters initiated. Thank you very much for being here. Matters initiated, and council reports. Justice Runcor?
Well, I won't have anything to report until the next meeting, I've got a couple of LAVDA meetings coming up, but in a, I'll see a time of heading it over to Stanford every now and then, for me, so...
Justice Runcor?
Just a couple of things. I observed nine eleven at Firehouse One, it was a moving and brief ceremony, remembering that day eighteen years ago. And I used the moment to reflect on how we've changed in that eighteen years, both for better and for worse. And I thought about how we want to go forward in creating a better world, and how we could, we do that with creating connection among all of us. And so I hope that that is what we can look for in the future, using those memories to sustain us. September 18th, went to the Visit Tri-Valley luncheon with a presentation on the growth of visitors to the valley. It's heartening, it's good to see that we are a place people want to come as a valley in general, and of course Livermore in particular.
There's an awesome video at that.
Yeah, I think there were some mayors who were at least pretending that they were jumping out of airplanes. EBC meeting was that evening, pleased to be able to report that Pleasanton voted to join the Community Choice Aggregate Energy, or EBCE, as did Tracy. Leaving Newark is the only city not part of EBCE. And so with Livermore, Pleasanton, Dublin, and Tracy all participating, it gives the, this part of the Alameda County and beyond, a pretty strong voice in energy. And also I'm pleased to see the growth of that organization developing new sources of energy, including one potential source out here in Livermore. And then on September 19th, Mayor Summit in Danville. Topics included housing and emergency preparedness, and I am happy to say that the mayor, Mayor Marchand gave an excellent responses to the questions, leaving no doubt in my mind which the best city in the Tri-Valley is. And then finally, under matters initiated, as you might have guessed, I'd like to bring up approving the rainbow flag to fly for Livermore Pride Week, I guess, starting on the 15th and continuing for a week thereafter. I'm not quite sure how to phrase that, but that works?
Close enough.
Close enough.
Do we have three nods to get on the, yes, so we're good to go?
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Justice Runcor?
I attended a, some LAVDA meetings and Project Services Committee and the Valley Link Board Meeting. Got a couple of matters initiated. One is, I'd like to follow up on Jim Schmidt's request and have the city issue an RFP for what to do with the part of this site not needed by the police for their needs. Did you guys get that?
We haven't gotten the report back from the PD yet, though.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that yet.
But as you said, whatever part they don't need.
Right. So it's, I mean, it's gonna take a while for the staff to do this. The Jim Schmidt's organization is ready to respond when the city gets around to it. So I'm not expecting this to happen immediately with everything that's going on, but we got to get it started, so. We got three heads on that?
And in fact, I think we were already heading in that direction, which was to, for, to return with something so that you could define the area. And so I'll take that...
Yeah, but I'm trying to get a little more specific, I want to get on a path to issue the RFP.
I understand.
In some reasonable timeframe.
Fair enough.
Right, not to study, the second thing I'd like to initiate is a, get a recommendation on opportunities for the Livermore City Attorney's Office to pursue effective criminal prosecutions, as did the city of Alameda recently. And I think it would be, given the size of the city we're at, that it would be helpful, especially in public nuisance abatement. So if we could just, I'd like to get three, a couple more heads to just say, let's get a recommendation back from the city attorney's office.
Sure, yeah, very good, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So on the 12th, I had a recycling board meeting with Stop Waste. I also attended the Tri-Valley Mayor Summit, and on the 19th, and then that late afternoon on the 19th, Councilmember Monroe and I spent some time at Farmer's Market, answering questions from citizens that came by, and believe it or not, not all the questions are about the downtown. So, we did have some interesting discussions, I think, with a variety of people that I've shared with the city manager and some topics that are yet to come before us, sidewalks, trees, things like that, that are very important to people, so. Well, see, I do want to, on matters, I did see Mr. Siler brought up a creating advisory committee à la camp with regard to what's happened to the city and the email and so on and so forth, and I just want, we, this is a topic that we will be addressing as we move forward. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, including bringing items back to you, especially as our strategy goes forward, and essentially what resources the city staff recommends we make available to the city in that process. So yes, you'll be discussing this issue in an open session forum as we sort of take lessons learned from this particular item and create a strategy going forward.
Perfect, thank you, I just wanted to make sure the public knew that this is already on our minds.
Thank you. I was also at the nine eleven observance at Fire Station Number Nine. And the, that was Bill Halverson's station, so Paul Halverson from Story Coffee came, and he actually brought coffee for all of the neighborhood that came, and showing a lot of class, he brought a carafe of decaf for me, because I don't drink leaded. And I thought that was very thoughtful of him, but Story Coffee just opened up, they're right across the street from the Livermore Cinema, and so by all means, stopped by, longtime Livermore family and, as I said, firefighter that served this community for many years. Also went to Valley Link, the Tri-Valley Regional... Also went to Valley Link, the Tri Valley Regional Rail Authority, we got updates on a lot of the public comments on the stations. On the twelfth, the Alameda County Local Agent of Information Commission, and we ruled on setting boundaries and the agency's influence for the old Dumbarton Quarry and the development of the park expansion out there. Also on the twelfth, Diablo Magazine acknowledged our own I-Gate Executive Director Brandon Cardwell as an agent of change. So this is something that, it used to be what they called the forty, under forty, but I guess that that was sort of ageist, so, but he's been, Brandon Cardwell's been recognized for the great work that he's doing at I-Gate, and I-Gate really is setting the, the standard for the region, for our incubation incubator, or innovation incubator. And I spoke at the kickoff on September seventeenth for the Chamber's Leadership Livermore Program, it's a great program put on by our chamber, to really understand that all the great things happening in this region don't happen by accident, it's by planning, and a lot of organizations working together to make this all happen. On the eighteenth, I was at Delval High School, they have a bicycle repair program, and they just repaired their one thousandth bicycle, and these are bicycles that are given back to the community, to kids that are in need, so a really wonderful program there. And also on the eighteenth was the Visit Tri Valley Annual Report, and I was also at the Airport Land Use Commission meeting in Hayward, we were ruling on the expansion of a recycling company that is in the path of the Oakland Airport, and they've had a number of fires because there are things that are explosive and flammable that are recycled at that plant, so we made the ruling on that. The nineteenth was the, was mentioned, the Tri Valley Mayor Summit, where we talked about emergency response, the housing crisis, where I pointed out that one of the disconnects there is, if people have a house, they don't think this is a crisis, so really, really needed to understand the, that we do have a lot of jobs being created in one area, a lot of housing in another, and we just do not have the transportation infrastructure in between. Same day we had the TV thirty board meeting, where we went over the, the budget and some of the operations, and today was the Innovation Tri Valley Bay Area Council Innovation Forum, that very, very interesting, several folks here were there. I asked several questions of the members of the state and the panel about water infrastructure and the future of, of the infrastructure, and nobody could answer my questions, so that was somewhat daunting, but we'll, we'll keep up with the questions and make sure that before Governor Newsom adds three point five million houses, that we have the sufficient infrastructure to maintain that. So with that, I have nothing else. We're, I see that we are thinking that we may be in the new building by then.
We'll let you know, one of our.
So hold, hold that thought, we can still see the, where the raccoon almost came through the wall here, but we may be at the, the new chambers at ten sixteen Livermore Avenue, or we may be right back here, so stay tuned. With that, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.